Welcome to the school, Milford School Committee meeting for Thursday, April ninth. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast through Milford TV and media from the Milford Daily News, Town Crier, and the Patcher in attendance. If anyone would like to make a video or audio recording of this meeting, you can transmit the meeting through any medium. Please let me know, and thank you. Welcome, everybody. The first order of business tonight is the reorganization of the Milford School Committee. Patrick?
Mike, I'd like to motion that if you will observe that you serve as chairperson for this year.
Patrick has a motion?
I'd like to second.
All in favor? Next order of business is the election or the motion for the vice chairman?
Mr. Chairperson, I'd like to make a motion for Joe Marius, if he so chooses, to serve as our vice chairperson.
Thank you. Second. All in favor? Welcome.
Thank you.
And of course, the last is our secretary.
Ooh. I had an idea. I'd like to make a motion that our ongoing secretary and Dr. Bob Tremblay continue to serve as secretary.
It'd be my honor.
I second that.
Patrick? All in favor? Okay, now that we've got that out of the... Everybody had an opportunity to read the minutes? You have any corrections? All right. The motion, Joe?
Motion.
Second by Pat. All in favor? Next agenda item, announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Patrick?
I have, I know we have a lot of people waiting to... I have a tendency to go on a bit, but I won't tonight. I just want to welcome back our two members who will continue to serve us for three more years. I'd also like to welcome for the first time John. Welcome to the school committee. I was, the advice that I was given when I was first elected to the committee was, you know, you should sit and just listen and pay attention for as long as you can so you get a feel for it. And while that may be good advice, it's not advice that I took. I think that if you have something to say, you should say it. If you have a question, chances are somebody watching on television has the same question, so there's no reason not to ask it. There's always time for plenty of discussion. And I think also, very importantly, we hear a lot of expert opinions and we hear a lot of people that tell us what we should or shouldn't be doing. I think that every member of this committee happens to be an expert on what the town and what the school should look like and how they should reflect, how the school should reflect what our town does. And I think it's very important to challenge and to question people when they come before us. And I also want to mention that our outgoing chairperson, Scott Harrison, was very good at that. One of his strengths, I think, was challenging anyone who sat before us to make sure that we were delivering value for the town, and I thank you for that. And I am sure that our leadership is going to continue in the same, in the same vein as we move forward into next year, and I think we're going to have a great year.
Any other member?
I have a couple of announcements.
Doctor Tremblay?
In your packets, you saw correspondence from a variety of state representatives around the kindergarten expansion grants. Just to comment on that, to recall as part of our budget discussion, we've had been, Kathy, I don't know how many years it's been funded on the, we have been the quality full day kindergarten grant, and without any notice this year, for our fiscal sixteen budget preparation, it was about a hundred and sixty thousand dollar impact to our local budget. There's a, as you can see here, there's a substantial push among school districts across the Commonwealth to ask for those dollars back. Now, whether that will come to fruition as the budget goes through the, you know, various houses of the legislature remains to be seen, but I wanted you to see that correspondence, see how there is an active effort to get those dollars back. Also, for announcements I have this evening, I know Judy is here, I might even, I see Judy Dagnes here for the nursing director, I might make you comment on this, but I wanted to announce about the food play performances. We've had a number of initiatives around health and wellness in the district, and I was asked to announce this evening that Hanaford Supermarkets generously donated, they funded three performances, which were free to us, of a food play program at each of our elementary schools. It's a fun-filled, national award-winning nutrition assembly. I had a chance to see it at Memorial School one morning. Judy, I think you had a chance to see it one of the schools as well. And I don't know if you want to comment, if it's okay with the chairman?
Sure.
If you, on that, and then maybe just, I also gave a distribution to the members that you asked me to share about the rethink your drink. Would you mind just maybe commenting on that?
Okay.
I'm putting you on the spot, I know, but I didn't know you'd be here, so lucky me.
Judy, do you mind coming up there?
It's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
Okay. So maybe just talk about food play, what that was about, and then what you want us to do with this commitment?
Okay. We had wanted to bring food play to our district, but it's quite expensive. It's twelve hundred and forty-five dollars for each assembly, so I reached out to Hanaford Supermarkets, and they very generously decided to sponsor three of the programs in each of our elementary schools. And then because they can only have four hundred per, per assembly, the PTOs at Brookside and Woodland paid for the second performances in each school. And it was so well received. I mean, it's just such an interactive and great learning experience, talking about health and wellness. There were some pictures in the newspaper last night. I don't know if anyone got a chance to see them, so we were very, very fortunate to have that. Kind of as a kickoff to our Healthy Kids Week, which will take place next week. And I think Bob has some paperwork there for all of you. Rethink Your Drink Initiative, we'd like you all to take the pledge for a week, and then because of the Gimme Five program, we want you all to list five ways you're living a healthy life, or trying to live a healthy life, so. Bob will be collecting those this evening, and they'll be posted somewhere. You don't have to put your names on the, on the colored sheet, just on the raffle. So we have many activities. I think Mr. Walsh is going to speak about those during wellness for Healthy Kids Week next week. I think it's our sixth year that we've been doing it, and we usually have a great response.
Thanks, Judy. Appreciate you stepping up to help me with that part of it. Nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
The only I have is more of a reminder to the school committee members. Tomorrow at nine o'clock is the walkthrough of the high school, so anybody that can make it, it's nine to ten. Just a quick reminder.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here to speak? With that, we move on to the next agenda item, which is student recognition. Yeah, Peter wants to come on.
Could we bring Griffin up first? Would that be, and then Connor's here.
However you want, however you want to do it, Peter.
Sure. Well, thank you for having us. This is Griffin Lynch. Griffin was fortunate enough to be awarded, actually, I'll pass this round, of course, we have a great photo with him, and he's the captain of our team, and we have Johnny Boychik, who's the captain of two Stanley Cup championships. He was able to get his picture taken with him that night. He spent some time on the ice with the Bruins, March thirty-first. Okay. So he's, he's one of the captains of our hockey team that made it as far as we've ever been so far. We're super excited about these guys, but I think what I wanted to talk about was, this is a major MIA award that he was honored with. He was chosen to be our sole representative of the Hockey Mach League this year, and what struck me, having coached in this league for almost twenty years as a head coach, is that he was the unanimous award winner. To get those coaches to all vote for, for one particular person, because you always, you know, you nominate your, maybe Oliver Rains puts up a student athlete, Foxmore puts up a student athlete, for everybody to defer to him and say, this is our student leader, this is our sportsmanship of the year for the hockey organization, I think I was really impressed. I've been nothing sort of impressed with him anyway, but to have the league be that impressed with him, we're just happy to have him, and I appreciate you folks having him in tonight to just kind of pat him on the back and say thank you for all that he's done for, for our school. Good man, good guy, so. And his parents are here, I just wanted, I always defer to the parents and say thank you, and his head coach is trying to get here from work, but, you know, he's a product of their environment as well, the parenting and the coaching and whatnot, so we just kind of defer to them and say thank you too, so.
Member? Patrick?
So how did you find out from the MIA, and then when you did, how'd you feel?
I got a call from my coach saying that I won the award, and I was completely shocked. Like, to be one of forty to win the award out of nine thousand kids to play hockey is an honor, so I was surprised.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So first and foremost, congratulations.
Thank you.
And, you know, just what a, what a tremendous award, and certainly from everything we've heard from Peter and, and hearing a little about the story, I'm not surprised. So, you know, what it, you know, Patrick asked you, how'd you feel? Have you heard, as I'm sure you've interacted with some of your pals and some of your buddies that are on the team, what was sort of the, what's sort of some of the feedback, and what was it like being on the ice with the Bruins? I got to ask.
I don't think my friends were surprised. You know, it was an honor just to be, you know, recognized like that, and to be on the ice was awesome, you know, it was with forty other kids, and just to be on the Jumbotron during the intermission was special.
Congratulations. Thank you. You know, just awesome job. Couldn't be more proud of you.
Thank you very much.
Joe?
Yes, just also want to congratulate you on the award and the great season you guys had this year. I mean, that was outstanding and really exciting, and you know, the entire student body really got behind you guys' sharing, it was really nice to see. Peter, can you talk a little bit about the award and some of the criteria that went into it?
Yeah, absolutely. It was, you know, certainly you have to be an upper echelon athlete, you know, for the MIA. That's one of the expectations, so you have to be a pretty good player. But the major, the two other components of that were leadership, and then above all was sportsmanship. So, you know, for, again, going back to the other eleven coaches in the league who saw this, and our Milford guy here, we were just really excited about that, but you really have to exhibit that, that leadership on and off the ice, you know. I think one of the things that struck some of the other coaches, because I did get a chance to chat with them, was, you know, he's always working hard, he's the first guy on the ice, he's the last guy to come off, he's always shaking hands with everybody, and, you know, his coach, in his letter to nominate him, talked about his lead by example, and just no matter whether we were winning or losing, you know, Griffin was a guy that would say, you know, come on, let's go, we can do this, and it's one of the reasons we got as far as we did in the tournament this year. But sportsmanship was a major, major component of that, and it's something that we're really pushing in our athletic program, so he's a, he's a beacon, he's a barometer for us right now, so.
That's great. Congratulations.
Any other member?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Peter, since your arrival as athletic director, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out the number of accolades of MIA athletes and recognitions, and, I mean, is it?
Good luck. Is it just good luck? I mean... I'm not sure if that's, if there's a connection. I, those guys, the guys and gals over there know me, I think they know what we're trying to do, and I think they're recognizing, they see that this town is a hardworking, you know, when it comes to athletics, I can certainly speak to the academics too, but I think these folks know that we're serious about what we're doing, and we're serious about our sportsmanship. Anytime I've interacted with the folks at the MIA, there's a reason it says student athlete. It's academics first, but I can guarantee you, if you're playing red, white, and black, we're going to play hard, but we're going to play under the sportsmanship rules. We promise you that we'll give you one heck of a game, but we're going to be, we're going to be nice about it, so.
I mean, I've heard nothing but positive feedback. We've said this to you every time, we don't want your head to inflate too big.
Yeah, no, my wife keeps me humble.
But I think I speak from behalf of the committee and the staff, that we've really been so impressed by your enthusiasm and, and almost a renaissance of our athletic program.
Sure.
And not to discredit any of your predecessors, but, you know, it takes that sort of fresh set of lenses to now move it to that next level, and clearly you've done that. And Griffin, I got a chance to make a plug for you, because you went to Memorial School, and I was principal when you were at Memorial School. I remember, I remember taking, I remember taking rides with your, with your mom to go see cultural programs, and you were in the car seat in the back of the car.
Yeah.
And I can't believe here you are. Kathy, is it, makes me feel really old now, too.
He's moving on, he's...
Seriously, I'm not as old as the chairman. Wow! We had the discussion, we're cool with it. But congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
You've grown up to make us all very proud, as Mr. Harrison said.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you mind if I share one quick thing of talking about?
Sure, absolutely.
The MIA, one of the things, I was fortunate enough to make the Athletic Directors Conference last week, and one of the things that the MIA pitched to me, which is something that I've worked with Pete Smith, who's the Assistant Executive Director, we had this discussion one evening on, you know, leadership. What do we do for our leaders? What do we, what do we really do, you know, and again, I'm not, you know, I'm not joking when I say this, we're lucky when we have great leaders like this that lead our teams, because the reality is, there's three hundred and thirty school districts in this state. What do we really do to get those leaders ready? What's our internal, what's our external system of training those kids to be leaders? And it's, there's a void that the MIA is aware of. So one of the ideas that I pitched to them, with a background that I have with Project Adventure and the Boomerang Project, which is, I won't go into now, it's an orientation program, and some of the things they're doing, we came up with an idea to host a leadership academy here over the summer, a three-day summit just for Milford, that the MIA wants to come and partner with us on. I've talked to Mrs. Benak, but I thought this might be a good time to, we were talking, just to share, there's an idea, we're putting it together, a three-day institute, and I think the MIA is going to consider adopting it, you know, in a year or two, so. Because the reality is, we, when I say we, I think the entire coast to coast, east coast to west coast, what do we really do for our leaders to get them ready, except they get voted in or chosen as captains, and now we say, well, go lead. And it's a quick couple of day internship with the head coach, right? And then we expect them to be great leaders, so I think what we're going to try and do is really do a better job training those kids. And then after year one, we'll sort of diffuse that to our music program, our student government program, and start to really train all of our leaders here at Milford, and then that might springboard into the state of mass and possibly New England too, so. We're always thinking big, just like you guys, thinking big.
I love it. It's fantastic.
Griffith, I want to congratulate you. You know, Peter, you make a great point. You and I had a conversation, my son, being a three-sporter.
Yeah.
I used to say to him, you think Coach is teaching you the game of basketball, he's teaching you the game of life.
I remember that conversation, yeah, you're right.
The game of life. So congratulations, and, you know, Dr. Tremblay and I had a conversation earlier, these are the things that we want to focus on, the positives that go on in this school district, because ninety-nine point nine percent of what goes on in the Milford public schools is all positive, because of people like you. So keep it up, and thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Get your picture taken.
If I may. Hey, Peter, before you step away for, just for one moment in the, under the line, I don't know if you'd come back up for a second. Under the, under the line of student recognition as well, I'd be remiss if you had another, another championship team.
Yes.
And I want to make sure we just take a moment and give you an opportunity to recognize, we have a national championship-winning team.
Yes, yes we do.
Here at Milford High School.
Yes, we do.
So if you want to just take two seconds, please.
Absolutely, and...
My daughter, the cheerleader, will kill me if I don't bring it up.
No, no, without doubt. And, you know, we're ecstatic. At any point, you can go and compete on a state level, which we always do with this program, it's, it's an honor, however, to be able to head to a national championship, a national competition, and then, you know, I'll be honest with you, I'm a guy that likes to win, I hate losing more than I like winning. But when you come out of top ten, something like that, you'd be ecstatic. I get the text that, you know, we won, I wrote back, is that correct? Are you sure? I went up before I share all this information, but yeah, they came in first place in the country for their division. We are planning right now to have them come in before you folks in a, you know, in a matter of weeks, matching it up so that you folks can chat with them, but I, you know, I would defer some of that credit back to you folks. You approved the trip, you let them go and compete on a national level, you know, Coach Johnson and, and her crew, you know, they're, they're known throughout Milford, they're also known throughout the state as, they work hard, you know, those are seven days a week, they're committed to what they're doing, and that's really what we want to accentuate and emphasize, is that this is a commitment to excellence, and if you're going to put on a uniform that says Milford on it, then we expect you to, we're not always going to win, but we're always going to give a hundred percent. Every day in practice and in every game, we're game-planning to win, so we couldn't be happier with these folks. We're happy to be winning a banner for the gym and, and really excited about this crew.
Excellent. So, yeah, then, so our, our Milford High School cheerleaders won the national championship in Orlando, Florida this past weekend.
For the varsity competition, which is the best competition, so.
We tried to get them here for this evening's meeting, they couldn't make it, so they haven't. For the next meeting, we'll have them, we've asked to have a video shown as well of their, some of their, you know...
Of their performance, yeah, absolutely.
I've seen it, it's amazing. I'm not shocked at all. I saw, I saw the video, it's...
It's intimidating, is what it is, the way you throw people around, you know, I don't think I would do it, but I'm glad they're doing it. Good stuff. So thank you for recognizing that. We'll definitely bring them back for you.
Peter, are you here for Connor also?
We are, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Want to do that next, or?
Sure.
He's got a proposal. So, did you happen to get a copy of his proposal, was that passed around? Okay, great, great. So I'll introduce Connor, and if you have any questions, I have been nothing short of impressed with this young man. He is a freshman who was on our varsity wrestling team, correct? He's playing baseball for us right now, and, so he sent me this letter, and having been a boy scout in the past, I'm a big supporter of the boy scouts and girl scouts, so when he sent me this letter, we had a meeting, we've had a couple of meetings, we've chatted, and for his, for his project, he wants to create a ticket-taking booth for the high school, which would not be permanent, it would be movable, depending on what event on the outside, you know, being very much involved with that. I know how cold it gets in the fall, how cold, especially the last couple of days in the spring, it can be for our ticket takers, so this is something that he pitched. He's been able to get some folks to donate the wood. I think the baseball program itself is going to be donating some of the lumber to his project, and he has met with Mr. Brashani and Mr. Marcon, who have really vetted the process with him. They met with the, who did he with? Help me. Not, not, building inspector, I wanted to say town inspector. The building inspector, so everything looks...
Right there.
Oh, you're...
That would be me.
Okay, sorry. Welcome aboard!
Thank you.
And we were talking the other night, too, and I, you've mentioned that, but I, I'm working really hard to get to know everybody. So I think they had a conversation with you about the fact that it would be movable, so we wouldn't need a permit. I believe that was what they shared with me. Connor was not at that meeting, I didn't have that discussion, so that might be something that we further investigate.
Yeah, well, I had a, I had a conversation with Connor's dad.
Okay.
And I know I missed Connor at the office once or twice he came down.
Yeah, he's persistent.
We need to schedule, we need to schedule an appointment.
Yeah, no, he's good.
The one consideration is going to have to be accessibility. Generally, every, every structure that the public can go into has to be handicapped accessible, so I believe that's going to have to meet those requirements as well.
Okay, sure, that's good to know.
But from a building permit standpoint, it's not a large enough structure to require a building permit.
Okay, great. And that's the nuances that I didn't know. So can I ask you a question? If it's only, if it's only going to be, this is way out of my realm of expertise, so, if it's going to be, like, folks that work for us, it would still, definitely still need to be handicapped accessible?
If it were...
Just in case?
If it were strictly for, for employees?
Yes.
It would not have to be?
Okay.
But if any of the general public can go in there, including the student body, then it would have to be.
Okay. It would be strictly for...
And I do need to double-check to make sure there's not an exception that may apply.
Okay.
I haven't looked into it yet.
Should we get a [inaudible]?
But that's on my list, list of things to do.
Yeah, it would just be for the employees.
Employees, okay, all right. So that might help us as we move through the process, but we knew we needed to come before the school committee and request permission to move forward, and Connor's here to answer any questions, and I'll do my best to help him, but he knows way more than I do. But we're happy to support him, I think it's a good project.
Any comments? Okay?
Yeah, I mean, anytime we can get labor, our vehicles up, that's a wonderful thing, so. But we've had several of these projects done, and they've always been done with such care, and, and I'm so happy that we have an opportunity to give you a facility where you can fulfill the requirements that you need to attain that rank, which is a very, very impressive thing. And, I mean, as far as options or anything that we can do to facilitate that, please let us know. I'm certainly in support of this, and I'm sure we can figure out the building part of it, that's not going to be a problem, so I just, I think this is wonderful. Thank you.
Motion?
I'd like to certainly just, again, congratulate you. Good luck on your project, and, you know, certainly very proud of you as well for, for going through this. It's not an easy achievement for getting to, getting to being an Eagle Scout, so thank you for, for choosing us for that project. So with that, I'm, it is a pleasure, I'm happy to make a motion to accept the project.
Second? Second by Joe. All in favor? Congratulations. Well done.
Thank you, folks. And Mr. Harrison, we'll definitely be in touch to see what we need to shore up on that, and we'll make that work, keep it work. Okay? Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Connor.
Thanks.
Congratulations, Connor.
Good luck.
Okay, the next agenda item is the school choice public hearing and participation vote. Every school committee must vote prior to June first on whether their district will accept school choice in the upcoming two thousand fifteen or two thousand and sixteen school year. Any discussion? Motion? Motion by Joe, second by... All in favor? Next is Shining Star Early Childhood Center Family Handbook and School Improvement Plan. Good evening.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, yep.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Well, you all know Judy Dagnes, she's one of our council members. So this should be very quick. We don't have very many changes to our school improvement plan or to our handbook. Do you want me to start with, does it matter which one you want me to start with?
Whatever makes you want.
I'm just going to take them as separate items for a vote.
Right.
Okay. Well, why don't we start with the school improvement plan? Second page, we just have different council members this year, we have a phenomenal council. Paul Pellegrini, Laura and Jemmy, and Teresa Persico are parent members, they've been awesome. Judy Dagnes, Donna Patel, and Jesse Lipter are our administrator, I mean, teacher members, and Sarah Humiston and Harold Rhodes are community members. So we've had four or five meetings this year, we've, they've all, everybody's participated, and I think that we accomplished a lot, so I'm really proud of our council. And then you've come to one or two too, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
So just a couple of changes. Standard one on page six, the only thing that is still ongoing that we've kind of been working on for a while is the report card. So we have been doing report cards, last year we started doing report cards for three, So we have been doing report cards, last year we started doing report cards for three, three-year-olds, and then we were doing one for four and five-year-olds. We've determined that it's, um, probably not a great idea to do a report card on a three-year-old. There's, they develop so quickly and so, um, it's kinda scattered, so we focused on the four and five-year-olds this year. And we did do, so we did report cards in October and March, and then we reported on them to parents in March. We just completed our parent-teacher conferences with the, this past week and they went really well. On page eight, um, we're still in the process of utilizing as much technology as we can in the classrooms. So, we will have the space next year for a smart board lab, which is awesome because we'll be able to take the kids out of the classroom and bring them to one specific area. With the help of Sarah Boyle, who has been a huge help to us, she's met with the teachers a couple of times. She's also set them up with, um, projectors to go with all of the iPads within the classrooms. And through grant money and through the help of Kathy Perry, we've had the funds to, to have all of this technology in each separate classroom, which is great. On page nine, um, last year we had second step curriculum that was facilitated by our board certified behavior analyst, Jessie Licker. She worked with our full-day classroom teacher and our five-morning classroom teacher. We've had huge success with the second step curriculum. We think it's one of our most important curriculums at the preschool. It's all about social skills, self-regulation and socia- social-emotional regulation, which obviously is very important. We, we hope that those skills, the social skills carry through forever. Um, on page ten, Shining Star will receive professional development on the WIDA E ELD standards. So we do have, we're fortunate to have a master card, cadre Kathy Sagala, who participated in thirty-six hours of professional development. So she now is able to train all of us on the WIDA E ELD standards. So we've been meeting with, um, Jen Lancaster and Kevin and I have met on us aligning with those standards and learning more about the WIDA standards. So, that's something that will be ongoing next year. Um, I think Kathy's gonna try to change it, train all of us next year so that we can implement the following year. So that's definitely a work in progress. On page eleven, um, continue to utilize a diagnostic classroom for E English language learners. We've had great success with this program. I don't know if you remember from the last time I presented, but on Friday afternoons, kids that have been referred to us through early intervention that are dual-language learners, if we're having a difficult time, which we usually do, determining if there's a language difference or a language disability, we're allowing the students to participate in an eight-week program so that we can get to know them and have them, you know, be in a playgroup. Um, it's run by one of our classroom teachers and a teaching assistant who is, who does speak Spanish. So, through that program, we've been able to determine if some of these kids actually do have disabilities, or if it's just a language difference and if they're able to acquire the English language. A lot of them have, so, um, I think that's cut down on the number of students that we've identified as having a disability who speak two languages. So, next year, I, if possible, we're gonna expand that, so we'll probably do that, um, two afternoons a week. Page thirteen, we'll continually assess and evaluate the option of adding additional programs. And I know we talked about this last time as well, we always have the thought of universal preschool in the back of our minds. I don't think that it's as, I don't think it's going to happen as quickly as I said last time. Um, but it is out there, so, this year, through all of the numbers that we got for registration and the decreasing number of the children that we've, that were referred on the autism spectrum, we could change things around. So last year we had five inclusion classrooms and two substantially separate classrooms. Next year, starting out, we will have six inclusion classrooms in one substantially separate classroom, which is awesome, yes. And because, because of that, it also allowed us to accommodate every single person that's registered. Our afternoon program is almost full. We have four spots that are available, which has never happened for as long as I've been there. We've always had several spots open in the afternoon. And again, that was because one of our teachers, Patty Reed, had suggested offering it at a reduced price. So, the tuition is the same as a three-morning program. So it was very, um, attractive to some families, which is great. And, we also will have the ability, one of our special educators will be a resource room teacher in the afternoons. So any of our students that we've identified as maybe having a delay in their cognitive skills, which we don't typically focus on at this level, we'll be able to pull them out into a separate classroom or have this special educator go into the classroom, so she'll have some availability in the afternoons. So, that's a bit, that will be a pilot, but we've been wanting to do that for a long time. So we're very happy about that. Page fourteen, review existing schedule and create a schedule that allows for professional collaboration. We have seen, this past year alone, an in, an increase in the number of students referred with significant special needs. So, in the past, you know, we've had just kids with global developmental delays, speech and language delays. We've had a lot of kids that have been diagnosed on the autism spectrum. We're starting to see a lot of syndromes and disorders that we haven't seen in the past. Because of that, because of, you know, ha- having to involve the school nurse in a lot of our, um, team meetings that we haven't had to do before and because of all the resources that we need in order to service these particular children, um, it's nice for us to have a little bit of planning time because their teams are very large. It in, it includes speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, vision specialists, and people that are district-wide. So, we're hoping that on Friday afternoons, if we can, because of the large number of students that we have, that we're allowed a little more time um, to meet as teams so that we can provide our students with everything that they need. And then lastly, um, we'll, we will purchase two-way radios for the classroom teachers who don't have access to the PA system. This has been an ongoing problem. It's something that Rob Quinn and I have been working on all year. Um, it is going to be fixed, it just takes a little while. So, in the meantime, we'll have the two-way radios so that the teachers who don't, who can't hear the announcements from upstairs will be able to let them know if there's an emergency situation, lockdown or whatever. Um, so, they're ordered and we're just waiting for them, so. Any questions?
Scott.
Lucy, so thank you both, you and Judy for, for coming and, and doing this, as always, um, great job. The only question I had was on the two-way radios. I know one of the things that we've done, um, and thanks to Chief LaWolfflin through the police station, he's donated a lot of radios that would not, that he's, he's kind of discontinued out of use, but there's still a lot of life left in them. I wonder, and I know you've already ordered them, but I wonder if there's an opportunity for us to revisit that and see if there may be some opportunity for getting some more reused radios that, cause I know those can be very, very expensive, um, that may be able to help with that.
These are, these are different though, right?
Or if it's something that's different completely, or, or what?
You have a few, we have a few.
Okay.
I don't, have they been donated by the police department?
Those are the ones that are throughout the district that were donated, so we can.
So, right, so we have radios that are, um, as you mentioned, the police, so we, the Shining Star has them already for their, but I think you're looking more for internal communication.
Right, yes.
So you're not, you're not talking to the police cruisers, like the radios will allow us to?
No, it's just so I.
Do have those also.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. That was just point of clarification, similar to what they have at extended day at a lot of the schools too.
Yes.
Where they just radio off, police send down, got it?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, that's one of the challenges with the Shining Star space being in the, in the high school, it's not a separate intercom system. Yep.
No, fair enough, that's why I just pointed clarification, thank you.
Thank you.
Do the phones allow you to do that? You can't use that through your phone, can you?
Well, sometimes, the phones, if they're not working, we don't wanna have to rely on that.
That's a dovetail to a technology conversation.
Um, and, you know, if, if the computers are down or the phones are down, it'd be nice to have backup. And that has happened before, in some.
The phones could work for a speaker, they have a speaker phone where you could call room to room, for, I mean, in other words, could you do an announcement?
Not all of them, no.
And also if they were out on the playground, we thought that what the teacher on the playground needed, you know, to get in touch with, you know, Lucy, that we needed walk, um, radios to be out there also.
Yes. I just wanted to make an observation, um, the, the way your plan has been put together, it's so similar to the way the rest of the district's planned. You can really see that common thread between pre-K moving all the way up to the high school. And all of the big topics that you're hitting on are, are so critical and they're just so aligned with everything and it's just reassuring to know that our pre-K is starting kids out on the right track with all the, the big ideas, how we report, how we assess, ELL. And the other thing that I wanted to note was that, how, um, interesting it is, that topic of ELL versus a language disability. And that's one of the most challenging things to tease out over time. So the fact that you've identified that and you're offering some early intervention and some early kind of investigation into that, I think will benefit all of our students and hopefully take some kids out of this special ed track who don't rightfully belong there.
Yes.
I think that's a great initiative, so thank you.
That's something also that, again, with, um, Kevin and Jen and I, and I think Bob and a few of us are going to be meeting next week. Um, there was a grant that they had asked us to look into and we don't qual, we don't meet all the criteria for the grant, but the grant would have allowed some English language learners to come to the preschool, um, so that we could, you know, provide them the same opportunities as other families, um, but because we don't meet the criteria, we're going to meet to see that in fut, in the future, if we can do whatever we need to do to meet the criteria so that we can offer some spots. Um, because we are noticing that any, you know, we did have an increase in the number of Eng- English language learners register, which is a good sign, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it was nice to see that there was a decrease in the number of students who actually went on an education plan compared to years past.
Yeah, that's great.
So, but it's still, it's still very tricky. We're getting there.
And, and this is something really needed at K four as well, for a lot of, those investigations happen.
Yeah, that's great.
And we're kind of, we're, we're definitely working at and looking at it.
Mm-hmm, it's really challenging, so it's great to see that you're addressing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member? Can I have a motion to approve? Joe, second by Pat, all in favor to approve the improvement plan?
Thank you. Well, Lucy? Okay.
How about your handbook?
The handbook, the only changes to the handbook are the, the bullying update, that policy has been changed. It's in line with all of the, the rest of the schools in the district. Our LICE policy, that was under review last time we presented, that's also in there. And, and in-school suspension. That, it, I know that it doesn't really apply to us, but our handbook is pretty much the same as everybody else's, so. Um, we were thinking about taking some of that out because I don't know that it's needed at our level, but I don't think it hurts to have it in there. So, there are really no major changes to our handbook.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question, maybe Judy can help, will you recently approve the TB screening? What's about being in effect? That's just a matter of, of a protocol for, what the physician uses, does that have to be referenced? This is our first pass at the handbook, of any handbooks, since this new policy, I don't know if that's to be referenced.
And I have to say, I thought of it after Lucy, you know, completed her, um, her handbook, so I did send it out today to the element
Okay.
and to all the other principals, so they will make the change. And it will be effective September two thousand and fifteen, and it just says that the TB, um, assessment risk form, um, will be required upon school entry and whenever, um, physicals are due.
Okay, so that'll, that'll be added to this plan or is that?
I will add it.
We will add it.
Yes.
I just wasn't sure we had the, the, it was just there, okay.
That, that's my fault, no, it, it does need to be in there and, like I said, I did contact the other principals, um, earlier today to have that. And there was another, um, sentence that Lucy did correct about BMIs, um, a change in the language there, that we do not notify parents anymore because it's not required to do so.
Okay.
Thank you, you're welcome. Any other discussions? Can I have a motion to approve?
So, I'll make a motion with the, um, with the, um, amendment that will be adding on the, the TB screening as well as the BMI adjustments that will be made to this, for effective, for su- uh, assuming that those come through as well. Uh, motion to accept with those additions.
Second? All in favor? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks Lucy.
As always, a nice job.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is Technology Department update. Could have it on a laptop.
I do, actually.
Thank you for having me again, I feel like a regular, so, um.
Your nameplate's being made, actually.
That's a. Welcome, John, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so yeah, I guess every couple of weeks we've been anxious to see, uh, the results of the Wally, you know, assess, we call it, I guess you call it the Wally assessment. They, Wally Computers did the assessment and, um, have really got all the results ready for us. Kind of put together an executive summary, which I believe all of you have as well. And, uh, we have some quotes and, uh, that sort of thing, so I don't know if we'll go over the, into that detail or not, but we have, as you can see, we have a forum of people with us. Um, two from, uh, Wally Computer. Uh, Dean Leclerc, who is, uh, setting up now, and, uh, we have Sam and Rich, uh, behind me as well, who actually performed, uh, the assessments. So I think with all of us here, including Worldband Two and our internal technical team and network team, that, uh, we can pretty much answer any question that you have regarding, uh, the findings, uh, going forward, what the improvements are going to be recommended as, and, um, getting things up to speed, so. I'll, uh, open it up to that. If you have any questions to start, or, uh, we can get right in with, uh, Dean, I think he has a presentation as well.
I was gonna say, why don't we do the presentation first and then we'll have questions after.
Okay. He'll probably have to hook up his laptop, so. Okay. And just while we're waiting as well, um, Wally Computer has done, uh, I think I reiterated this to Bob Tremblay as well, that, uh, they've done many, many school districts around Massachusetts, uh, like projects. And, um, you know, have developed some comprehensive, uh, studies for us and, uh, getting everything ready for the, uh, technical side now too, so. I'll turn it over to Dean.
Thank you. Um, so, like, like Paul mentioned, we have a, a team here with us today, um, I have some colleagues in the back with me. Uh, Adam Skolnick, just from a name perspective that you'll probably see on the documents, he is, uh, Paul and your primary point of contact, as the account representative for Wally. Unfortunately, he is out of town today, so he couldn't be here today. Um, my name is Dean Leclerc, I'm the Director of Emerging Technologies, I've been at Wally twenty-nine and a half years, I'll be there thirty years this December. As we drill down through some of this technology, I probably have to admit, I think I installed it twenty-four years ago, so. Uh, I've been in this building many times, working with a lot of predecessors here. Sam and, um, and Rich, Paul introduced, I also have Alex Hebert here with me today. Um, so from my perspective, we're looking at about eighty-five, probably to a hundred years of technology experience with the four of us in the room. And, I think that also demonstrates our commitment to Milford as a community, being a, a business member here in Milford. You know, I got three guys that decided to come here to a school committee meeting tonight to help answer questions for you, uh, so I thank them for being here. I'll, I'll go as fast as I can, if anybody wants to learn more about Wally, we'd be happy to talk offline, I don't think we need to kill you guys with that. The highlights for me are, we were formed by educators, for educators, back in nineteen seventy-nine. John Wally started our company as an IT director in a public school system. Um, and we've grown to a hundred and plus million dollar company thirty-five years later. So, uh, with that, uh, we have two locations, Southwick is our corporate. We've had a presence now here in Milford, I think, for ten-plus years, um, and are thankful to be here. Things we do to make us a computer company, uh, fast to that. You can tell I'm a tech, not a sales guy. So, uh, as mentioned, we were contacted to perform a, an IT assessment for you. Um, we use multiple tools and manual processes to do that. Um, and, uh, from that perspective, uh, the assessment tools that we use focus on, you know, IT problems, uh, performance issues, compliance issues, infrastructure health and reliability, um, and things like that. The thing that I love about this assessment is, everything that you're gonna see from a statistical perspective has nothing to do with any of our personal opinions. Um, this is a, a, a cloud-based service sponsored and built by the manufacturers, Hewlett-Packard, Cisco, uh, IBM, uh, VMware. So, we collect the data, it gets analyzed, and all of the, the statistics and numbers that you're coming back with and that we're presenting to you were generated by the analytics of the technology, not by me, not by Alex, not by Rich or Sam. So, getting right into it. We're all here to talk about school and education and IT, and things are based on a grading system, that's how we rate ourselves today. Milford's grade isn't that good. So, um, there's about thirty-five hundred, uh, infrastructure assessments that have been done with this tool. Um, it rates infrastructure and, uh, what we call the server side. And what I'm gonna drill into a little bit further is, this number is actually misleading. Had we actually had access to all of the equipment, your score would have been a lot worse. So, I'm not trying to be, you know, upset anybody, I'm trying to state the facts in terms of what we're gonna see.
What do you mean by, if you actually had access to all of our?
Some of your equipment is so old that it doesn't support my tool. So, I couldn't collect data from it because it's just that old. So, not only, I couldn't get to the device to tell you it failed, so you actually had a better score because I didn't see a bunch of devices that should have failed the test. And then there's a, there's a middle ground where the infrastructure has to be at a certain level for us to test it. So some programming has to be done on the equipment when it gets deployed, so that it can support our tool, and that wasn't the case. So, we actually would have had to probably invest hundreds of hours to get your, up, your infrastructure to a point where these analytical tools could have given you an actual report. So we'll go through that, um, as we can drill in. We test on five major areas, optimization, reliability, scalability and security and performance. And you can see you have pass and fails, and you have no data. So we have no data across all categories. So, again, um, you know, from our perspective, um, you know, we, we have some results that we can share and we have a lot of areas where there's just equipment, um, that, um, you know, we don't have. Um, under normal circumstances, we have three major deliverables with our report. We have a complete asset report across the, uh, infrastructure. We have what we call an EOX report, which in our industry means a device is either end of sale, end of support, end of life. So at some point during its life cycle, the equipment becomes, okay, the manufacturer's no longer selling this, they're no longer supporting it and/or, you know, it's totally end of life. A lot of equipment comes with a lifetime warranty. Well, at some point, they declare it's an end-of-life piece of equipment, they can't support equipment, you know, for the entire life cycle. So, um, this is a high level, um, the data that we collected with the tool. We were able to see and collect information on three infrastructure items throughout the district. I'm pretty confident there's more than three pieces of equipment in closets or under desks that control the infrastructure. So, we just had no access to it, the tool couldn't find it. I believe we accessed, uh, most of the core servers, I don't think there's a lot of servers in the district. We were able to see two workstations, although that to me is trivial data, cause that's not what we were focusing on, so I'm not, uh, too concerned that we didn't get workstation data, and we have some other, uh, inaccessible devices. Uh, I'm gonna skip out of this for a minute and I'm actually gonna go right to, um, the assessment, um, data itself and kind of give you an idea of what, uh, you know, we're essentially would, um, ideally like to be, uh, looking at. And I apologize, I hit the, uh, wrong arrow there. What are we doing on the screen here? So, it's a little tough on the screen, I apologize, but we have about fifty different categories that are, that we scanned from. And you can see you either get a check, or a non-data, or a fail across that. So, as we go through each of the components, um, and we look at the information, you know, that we have there, I can also go through, um, the, um, the lifecycle report. So. You know, what we have is, from an infrastructure perspective, we would normally like to see a list of every, what we call the switch infrastructure, the components normally in the closets, um, that connect. You know, we able to see your firewall, we were able to see a couple of components. But, you know, we really, um, didn't get, um, a really a lot of data that we wanted to have. We were able to see servers and, and virtual infrastructure, um, and we do have a full list of, um, We were able to see servers and virtual infrastructure, and we do have a full list of your infrastructure and your servers. So, if I just scale back to our PowerPoint for a minute. So, from a file server perspective, this is the listing of the devices that we picked up and we scanned, and everything that's in yellow is either already end-of-life by Microsoft, or kind of the end of April, Microsoft's no longer supporting that. So, you have, you know, one piece of server equipment that's currently up to date with operating system standards, you know, that you'd be feel, able to feel comfortable moving forward with, from that perspective. In summary, from the high school perspective, when we look at the infrastructure itself, you have a mixture of Cisco equipment, two different flavors. You also have Netgear, and you also have some D-Link equipment. This was probably the other biggest factor around the infrastructure and the data gathering. You know, the thirty-five sixties are an end-of-life product from Cisco, the Netgear and the D-Links, you know, sometimes very difficult to get the data that we need to get out of those. But, one of the biggest challenges for IT support staff to be able to support infrastructure is consistency. When you have three or four different manufacturers and different makes and models of equipment that they have to support, it just makes their life harder. So, from our end, the big issue was, we didn't have what we call the SNMP data to collect. So, I just, you know, have a summary of each of the schools, of, you know, the different brands of equipment that was found in each of the schools. So, from a high-level perspective on your infrastructure, the biggest thing for us is the mixed vendor, Cisco, Netgear, D-Link. Difficult to have a management capability on those, and difficult to support long-term. Several studies show the cost of ownership on equipment, when you start to mix, you know, it just drives the cost of support. The SNMP data is our biggest factor around the ability to, you know, have a much deeper dive report for you. If we really drill into that mid-layer, where you do have some equipment that's not that old, in our world today, we're living off of what's called PoE, or power over ethernet. So, that allows us to drive power to the device at the end of the twisted pair cable, instead of having to have power. You're now seeing devices like phones, access points, security cameras, even actual clients now in labs, desktop computers, are able to draw that power over the ethernet cable. So, even with the equipment that you have, it's really generation one, it's considered standard power over ethernet, whereas everything today is what they call PoE plus. Drawing more power, usually a higher demand. When you start to get into today's technology with wireless standards, when you put a device in the classroom, you really have to have power over ethernet plus to draw enough power to that, to support all the clients that are gonna be connecting to it. From the devices that we were able to capture data, the firewalls that we have captured data are dropping a lot of packets, which means they're either undersized for the job that they're doing, or there's a failure with that device, could be an infrastructure leading up to that device. But, you know, of the two or three devices that we actually have data from, they also failed in terms of that, so. On the server side, high level, you know, you have an end-of-support operating system across ninety-five percent of your platform. We really weren't able to get a deeper dive on the SNMP data. We also have servers themselves dropping packets, so either, you know, underscaled for the job that they're asked to do today, possibly configuration problems, or just the device at the other end, you know, being an old switch, and just compatibility problems. And then, again, we have servers with high utilization, so an aging piece of hardware, four or five years old, just, you know, not really able to handle the job that it's being asked to do today. As we drill into, you know, an ideal scenario, when we get to a stable period or point in the infrastructure, I've been at this a pretty long time. I spend most of my time either in this role, or working with people to try to just plan for the future. As the technology becomes more and more important to the classroom learning, we all look for what we call high availability. How do I keep this infrastructure running without tech support, without running and having, you know, guys chasing, you know, the hardware problems? So, we would ultimately like to see high availability in the critical infrastructure, and there's really none of that in place today. And, you know, if you follow our industry, virtualization is a big key, virtualization consolidation, how to do more with less. You guys are an absolute perfect candidate for, how do I do more with less physical hardware? And you do that by virtualization, and we have some documentation around that. What we did as part of our assessment was, we provided a new network design for each of the schools. So, that's included in here. We also provided what's called heat maps, which we took the floor plans that were provided to us, and we have software that does what's called a predictive survey, so we can place access points in the ceilings, and based on the construction and general makeup, we can determine how many devices would be required to get you up to the standards that we see, you know, most of the schools that we're working with today. Everybody wants BYOD, they want one-to-one, they want students with Chromebooks, or laptops, or iPads, or iPhones. And, you know, you get to a classroom area where you got four classrooms in a row with twenty-five kids, now you got a hundred-plus devices, which the reality is, that's really three hundred devices, because all of us today are carrying a phone, along with our tablet, along with our laptop. Yeah, heck, two days from now, their watches are gonna get IPs, right? I did Drake at high school last summer, we put their wireless in place. The school deployed a hundred and fifty devices for the wireless network. Three months later, the wireless network is supporting seven hundred and sixty devices. The kids brought almost five hundred wireless devices into that property in less than three months. So, it's there, it's not when, it's now. So, what you'll see is, we have an infrastructure design for each property, and a listing for the number of access points that are required. I have some really large hard copies, for those of us that can't see, and we have the electronic copies here. So, on the wireless side, like I said, what we do is, we take the actual physical maps that were provided, and each of these dots represent a wireless access point that you would typically deploy in the ceiling. The standards today are one of those in every classroom. That's where every school I've worked with in the last year-plus is doing. With the exception of, obviously, there are some people that have some legacy technology that they're just trying to hold on for a couple more years. You know, you can get by with one in every other classroom, depending on what your initiatives are for the, either the one-to-one or the BYOD. So, what we've got is these predictive heat maps for every property, and the listing of equipment that goes with them, and, you know, the layout of how it would be deployed. So... I'll kick in my thirty seconds of marketing, and just why we're here talking about this. We use a technology called Arrowhive, it's fairly well-known in the industry in education. In Massachusetts, there's approximately three hundred and sixty school districts and communities. We do business with about two hundred of them already, and we've deployed, deployed at least a hundred and fifty of those school systems with the kind of technology that we're talking about today. Rhode Island last summer did a Rhode Island one-to-one classroom initiative, it was about a twenty million dollar project. We did about three and a half to four million dollars of that project in Rhode Island, with the guys who are sitting in the room here. Some of you may be familiar with Mass IT, they just rolled out five million dollars' worth of grants focused on middle school only. Sad to say, only thirty districts in the entire state applied for money for it. So, they awarded five million dollars to middle schools for all this technology. We were just awarded a million dollars of that. So, we're gonna do twenty percent of that infrastructure for about six communities in the state. And with just the schools we're working with right now, we're already doing about five million dollars' worth of E-rate business this coming summer. So, you know, from our perspective, you know, that's why we feel like we're here talking about that today. So, I've got a seventy-five-page report that goes through every device, and every error message, and every analytics that we have. I don't think you guys wanna go through that in depth. But, you know, if I were to close, I would say, there's either a lot more manual effort to go find and analyze some very old pieces of equipment, I don't think the effort's worth it. I think you've at a point right now where you just have to look at a clean slate from the foundation up, and everybody knows you can't build a house without a strong foundation. So, that starts with wiring, that starts with switching and infrastructure, and wireless. Those are all covered under category two of E-rate. So, I don't know what your position is as it relates to E-rate funding. I can tell you right now that the vendors I work with are saying that there is more E-rate money right now than people have asked for. It's totally different than it was for the last three years. The last three years, they ran out of E-rate money, and it was only the ninety and eighty percenters that were even getting considered right now. I believe the latest figures are upwards of five billion dollars is in the E-rate category-two pool right now. And based on the four-seventies and four-seventy-ones that have already been filed, there's extra money. So, you guys got about four and a half more days to get a four-seventy-one filed, and I don't know what your ratio is, if you guys are, you know, seventy or an eighty percent district. Does anybody know off the top of their head? Sixty percent? You have until April sixteenth, they extended the deadline for filing four-seventy-ones. So, the State of Massachusetts Department of Education already filed a four-seventy on your behalf. So, you still have four more days to file an actual four-seventy-one, which is the specific request for what you want for monies.
For hardware, for infrastructure?
Category two, yeah, infrastructure category two, you have up until April sixteenth. We have a lot of really upset commercial customers right now, because this team has been doing nothing but E-rate requests for the last thirty days, to try to get the filings done. So, you know, we feel fairly knowledgeable of that, and like I said, I know for a fact that all the schools that we've been working with have not filed the four-seventy-one yet. And it doesn't matter if you filed the four-seventy. Like I said, the State of Massachusetts DOE posts a general four-seventy for all public schools in Massachusetts. Your job now, under your four-seventy-one, is to get this kind of specific data and decide, what do you wanna put in each school? And how much can you afford on your match? Because that's really what it comes down to, from my perspective, is if you're at a sixty-forty, and you want a million dollars, then you gotta come up with four hundred thousand, or you can't afford to get the six hundred thousand that they're gonna give you. So, that's, I think, why we're here, is to break the bad news to you about what it might cost to actually do this. And we've got a pretty broad range, you know, and again, I don't think anybody wants to go line for line on the proposals. I'd be happy to schedule that, whoever wants to, Paul's discretion on how you wanna see that. But, we started all the way at ground zero with wiring. You know, obviously, we put access points in the ceilings, you're gonna wire for that new in every, every classroom typically, because you probably either don't have it, or it's not up to today's standards for speeds and feeds. With that, part of the chokes, part of the struggle, and, you know, I can let Sam and Rich expand on it if you guys wanna go in, but because we didn't collect the data electronically, we came out here and did walkthroughs in every building, and, okay, here's the infrastructure that we found. You walk through the building, and, oh, there's a switch under somebody's desk, because you didn't have enough wiring to add another printer. So, you put a switch under the desk, which everybody does, but that's just gonna cause problems down the line. So, the only way to actually get to the kind of infrastructure that you wanna get to with less equipment, less hardware, is to have the wiring support fewer number of switch locations. So, if I wanna get to this kind of deployment at the Stacy School, I have to make sure the wiring goes back to those closets. So, we've proposed, based on drop counts, a number that allows us to bring in a wiring contractor and start fresh with infrastructure and wiring.
Excuse me, why are you proposing from a CAT five to a CAT six? Are CAT fives outdated, it would not handle the infrastructure that you're proposing? Because that seems like a very large project, even just in the high school, to take all of the wiring out that's a five, and bring it to a six.
So, when you start getting into the speeds that the new wireless technology supports, and where we feel the industry is gonna be in six months to twelve months, you're not gonna get the speeds to those devices with CAT five. You're not gonna support the gigabit and/or the ten-gigabit speeds that the devices are gonna ask for. So, for example, today, if you look at wireless standards, the newest technology in the wireless world today is what's called eight oh two dot eleven AC. It's what the new iPads come with, it's what the new tablets come with, that's a one-gigabit connection to the device. If I'm in a classroom, and I have twenty-five users with a one-gigabit connection to this thing in the ceiling, and the only thing feeding that thing in the ceiling is a one-gigabit connection, we just created a very large bottleneck at that device in the ceiling. So, I don't believe, from a technology standpoint, that the technology's gonna be able to stay the way it is much longer with what you're seeing in the ceiling. So, and infrastructure, so computers in our world, if you make it to the end of your warranty with a piece of hardware today, one to three to four years, we consider we did our job. You start asking technology to be used in year four, five, six, seven, and eight, on the backend side of the house, you don't get that out of technology. Schools, they don't have any choice in a lot of times. But, wiring, on the other hand, usually gets done every ten years, if you're lucky, maybe every fifteen years. So, I would not wanna see anybody to put in CAT five today, and in six months, have to replace it. So, we have to put cabling in the ceiling for access points, so you really wanna put CAT six. If the budget supports it, you really wanna put CAT six-A, but now the pricing's really even stronger from that. And I don't wanna replace every cable in the building, but the problems that you have by placing all these switches and junctions under the desk is because you don't have enough cabling in the building. It's not that I wanna replace what you have, it's you don't have enough terminated in the right location. So, that's kinda where we're at.
Excuse me, can I ask a question? That's the case with CAT five, is CAT five-E in the same category?
CAT five-E doesn't do ten gig, right? No, so you're gonna get one gig out of CAT five-E. If you wanna get to ten gig, you have to be at CAT six or greater. And you really can't run ten gig over CAT six without six-A over long distances, so, you know.
The five-B only really changes the shielding of the cabling, so the highest speeds would have to be a six.
And it, so that speed that CAT five-E will support still isn't enough of what we need, or what we need under your proposal?
You'd be, you'd be okay today with a five-E infrastructure? I just wouldn't wanna stamp that as a ten-year plan, that's where you run into challenges.
Did you map the cabling in every building?
No.
I mean, did we look at Brookside, which is on the list?
I, no, I don't know, we had Rob, did Rob come out and walk with us, or not?
Uh, he was down and walked first.
Okay. Yeah, I think for Brookside, we probably have a number that's for the new access points. We probably didn't have a number for Brookside for replacing everything, I think we had a number just for the new access points. But, I feel we do still have a little bit more work to do. I'm not here today with our engagement over, you know, I think there's a lot more that we can do to get, you know, to some final, you know, places, obviously, we're under a time crunch for making that happen. But, along with this engagement, we've also secured some additional funds from a couple of the manufacturers to allow me to put some engineers back on site for some more hours, to actually get us to that point where, you know, I think what we probably, you know, wanna try to understand is, what do you feel, based on some of the data that we have, is a realistic expectation for what you're gonna be able to try to accomplish? But, you know, we'll provide you all the information we can, from that perspective.
Thank you.
Joe?
Dean, can you just elaborate a little bit more on that E-rate and the deadline that's coming up in four days? So, do we just have to file an application of intent, or do we actually have to have a finalized plan?
The four-seventy-one, so the application for intent was called the four-seventy. That's already been filed on your behalf by the Department of Education. The four-seventy-one...
We already did.
And you filed your own, yeah. So, the four-seventy-one is more of the, we now know exactly what we want, and this is the vendor that we would choose to do it with. That's usually the way the four-seventy-one works, is you pick an ITC forty-seven vendor off the Massachusetts State Contract, who the DOE has said will guarantee you the best price and is certified in all these areas, i.e. Wally. And then, you work, we work with your staff and say, this is what, in an ideal world, you would like to submit for, knowing that if you get funded, you've got your match and/or enough portion of your match. So, the way E-rate's changed under category two is, it's a five-year plan. So the way E-rate's changed under category two is it's a five-year plan. And it's based on your student enrollment by building. So not only do we have to look at this, the next piece that I think Steve actually did, I think we have a spreadsheet. So the way the E-rate works now, and I apologize if I'm talking beyond, and if everybody knows this, tell me to shut up. So E-rate today, category two, is based on student population. So if you tell me you have a thousand students here at Milford High School, you get a hundred and fifty dollars per student over the next five years of E-rate for this building. You can go get that money this year and spend it all and then not file another request for five more years for this building under category two. You can do a partial request under this year, knowing what you can match. Then you're allowed to file one more request in the next five years, so you can have up to two requests for this building under category two. So if you're a sixty forty and you have a thousand students and you get a hundred and fifty bucks a head, you can have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this building under category two and then you have to put up your forty percent of that. So not all of this is actually doable because of your potential population in the, in the schools. And then that's, and you can't like buy it for the high school and then deploy it to Stacy or Robinson or Woodland School. If you request it for a school, the E-rate police will come through and ask for an audit at the end of the job. And if it didn't get deployed in the right school, we're both in trouble. So the, so, I don't remember what the original question was, I rambled so bad.
It was that, that application, the four seventy one.
So the four seventy one is more of, this is exactly what we would like to do with this vendor. And so the four seventy that you filed was kind of your, raising your hand to say, Milford would like to do something. And then all the hawks like us start calling you and say, hey, we can help, we can help. So your four seventy was, we want to do something, who wants to help? And now your four seventy one ideally is, okay, we narrowed it down to this vendor, I T C forty-seven, guaranteed state contract, pricing and rates, and this is what we know we can afford if we're approved all the money. I believe, depending on what your approval comes in at, you can then come back to them and say, well, we can't afford our forty percent for this whole thing this year, so we'll take only this amount. And then you build into your next school budget the ability to fund the remainder of that. So some schools I'm working with are, are making zero requests at all for a specific building because they don't want to put the clock starting of, we already asked for money once for that school. So they're focusing their match on just going to do the high school or just going to do this school. So, yeah, that was, the deadline was originally two weeks ago, but the deadline for four seventy ones, as I understand it, is April sixteenth.
So Kathy, you said we've already filed that four seventy one, so we're not at risk of losing any of these matching?
I, I literally just emailed our E-rate vendor to ask if we could look at increasing our four seventy one. Just to see if we are in the realm of doing that. But Dean, just clarify, so you're one vendor that could come in and, and give us a quote based on the E-rate monies? And then there are other vendors that could, so to speak, provide a second quote, which
Absolutely.
would qualify for E-rate to keep the process competitive, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah. That's, that's what it's expected. And again, so under, under E-rate and under I T C forty-seven, so Wally doesn't run cabling. You know, we don't have guys with Wally paychecks that climb ladders and run the cabling in the ceiling. We work with companies who are on I T C or I T T fifty, which is the state cabling contract. So for me to be a single source provider under I T C forty-seven, I have to pull in an I T T fifty contractor who has to meet the guidelines for state contract for wiring. So from our perspective, the competitive aspect of it is usually governed by I T C forty-seven and usually the hardware is controlled by either state contract or, you know, other areas. And the, the, the small piece of that that usually ends up being the variance is the professional services. How much is it going to cost for that company's team to come in and actually do the work?
Which is not E-rate reimbursable?
Yep, that's all part of E-rate.
Okay.
The only thing that's not reimbursable under E-rate under category two, from my perspective, is managed cloud. So like things that are in the cloud, you can't buy under E-rate. Like Arrow Hive as a technology for wireless is a cloud product. It manages in the cloud, there's no master controller in the closet that runs the wireless. But because you buy it with a piece of hardware, it is E-rate refundable or covered. With Arrow Hive future talking, you buy Arrow Hive and you get a three-year subscription. At the end of three years, you'll have to renew that cloud subscription. That will be one hundred percent paid by Milford Public Schools, not allowed to submit an E-rate application for the renewal of the cloud service because there'll be no hardware associated with it.
Because you're expected to maintain.
You're expected to maintain that yourself going forward.
But that would also be advantageous for the school committee too. If, if the E-rate funds exist for the five years and you're only qualifiable by the one hundred and fifty dollars per student, you want to get the most competitive vendor for your money. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and we've competed in places like Lowell and Lawrence and Everett and Revere. And we've been awarded those, you know, million plus, million two, million three. So those were very competitive situations and we've won them all so far. So I feel pretty happy that we wouldn't be here today if we weren't competitive.
Any other members? Sam? You know, I, as I can't, no. Thank you for this. First of all, thank you guys for coming in and for proposing this. Just for the benefit of, of those, do you have, I guess what I'm looking for from you and, and from this presentation is, you know, we've gotten a lot of different pieces that have been going through and Paul's been communicating with us as, as we sort of joke about the fact that he's becoming a regular member here. I guess I've got a couple of questions. One, what are you expecting for a net cost?
So what I have in possession, and I don't know if it's the same as what Paul has, we have a, we have a proposal for each building for wiring, infrastructure, and wireless and services. I have five copies of that today that are here with us. I can leave that with you. I, I apologize, I don't have the total sum on that. Our team was working on that, you know, diligently up until this morning. So we have a proposal for each building for everything that we've talked about. And, and that was kind of what we planned going in. When we talked about doing this engagement, the plan was to evaluate the infrastructure with an emphasis knowing that, you know, there really wasn't a wireless infrastructure that was going to meet the standards of one-to-one in B Y O D. So we planned as part of our deliverable to do the heat maps, to do the cost for the, the infrastructure and the wiring. And there was some hope being held out for what might be able to be kept and or reused in the building to support the wireless. And from our perspective, that's very minimal of, you know, what's salvageable. Really truly deep dive, yeah, I think probably if you were to focus on a couple buildings and then take some of the stuff that's here, would it be an upgrade? Could you consolidate all of the Cisco gear that you own now across two or three buildings and get that over to Stacy and buy them a couple of years? Absolutely. That's most likely what would probably end up happening in the grand scheme of things if you're not able to just look at this and start from scratch and, and do it all. And that's something that, that we'd be happy to in the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours, come up with kind of a, that kind of a plan. We definitely could do that.
One of the other things that's been talked about and I'm, as I'm going through the report and forgive me, I, I'm a banker. We don't do technology. With regards to, you know, one of the conversations that's been coming on, that's been coming on a lot is, obviously with fiber being run, that would be included in all of this process as well to be able to enable. That's the cable that you're talking about, all the fiber and everything else being run through all the schools. And then I think about the other end, right? So we talk about the fact that with technology, the challenge we're always facing is that, is that challenge of time, right? So you think about your phone, and the moment you peel the label off, it's obsolete because the latest and greatest is coming out next. And you're always waiting for whatever September happens out in Silicon Valley. You get really excited to spend eight hundred dollars on a new phone every year. How would this, and you touched on it briefly, when you think about this investment, because it's a significant investment. It's a significant investment that we're asking, and though there's rebates from an E-rate perspective, that's great. We're still going to be asking the taxpayers of town in Milford for an awful lot of money. If we were to start down this road. What's the forward-looking plan on this? And this is where I'd kind of look for you, Paul, as well. As the, as the person who's charged with having that vision, what does this prepare us for down the line? I mean, are we looking at having to sit down and, and with all due respect, not that I don't enjoy having you here, I certainly don't want to spend this, spend an incredible amount of money to re-invite you back in here in twelve to eighteen months.
Right. Just to answer that question too, obviously, the need is now. We, we need the network infrastructure, that foundation before, to go forward. And like I said before too, it just comes down to the fact of really any projects that we want to do, basically, you know, basically going forward from this point, have to be upon that foundation that Dean was mentioning too. So we're talking anywhere from one-to-one to the park testing even down the road. I know from our projected plan too, just different programs, the more that we assume for server-based side, you know, from E L L things to, you, you name it, I mean, any of that, that we have to have that foundation. So going forward, I think it's more and more time that we don't do it, it's just putting more stress on the infrastructure.
No question. I guess my question is, and I'll maybe be more clear with it, is with the plan that's being proposed, does this set us up for, does this give us that foundation so that we can be for, successful for the foreseeable future? Realizing that the future is murky when it comes to technology because it changes so rapidly. Would this put us into a position to be forward-looking so that that way we're not having to play catch-up in six to twelve months?
Yes, totally. And after my review of all the components that Wally's put together and the recommendations from switches to servers to infrastructure wireless, it will definitely put us in place ten years down the road from now, yes.
You know, cabling manufacturers, for example, with an infrastructure project like this, there's a non-issue. They'll give you a twenty-year guarantee. So you'll walk away with the cabling with a twenty-year guarantee, warranty from the manufacturer of that cabling and the guy who's going to install it for you. From a switching and hardware perspective, the methodology shift from what you have now to, you know, what we've proposed and, and what we've done, you know, multiple times throughout the state is it's based on a modular design. So I'm putting in basically a framework or a chassis and I'm putting a module in there that's going to support today's needs and probably a very comfortable five-year plan. With this kind of infrastructure, I have no problem saying you're looking at a very comfortable five-year plan without touching it as long as Bill Gates doesn't come up with some miracle idea in six months that we don't know about.
I think they made him retire, which is good. Like I said, what my concern is, is I don't want us to, I, I understand, and we've talked about this since you first came in front of us, Paul, in October. We understand we're on rotary service right now. We, we got that. We got, we, what I'm trying to avoid is, I don't want to bring us from rotary to iPhone one when iPhone eight comes out next year.
Right. Yeah, we've taken that into consideration as well. I think that's why we're talking about the technology that is the foreseeable future, you know, in terms of building this whole infrastructure out and doing it the correct way and trying to consolidate certain things too so that, you know, our costs are competitive when it comes to that. But we're not going the cheap route, you know, and, and by all means, we're not going the most expensive route. But it's a matter of, we, we're sustained with this infrastructure that is recommended. We're sustained for the foreseeable future, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and like I said, anything, anything new that comes out, you know, you look at some of those, you see the little empty boxes. Those are for expansion and or the next technology that, that comes down the road. This product itself is based on a, a, a foundation of the, of the vendor that's been very strong in education for the last five to six years. But this is their next generation product that just hit the street within the last six months or so. So you're, you're not on the bleeding edge, but you're with a product that, again, hardware-wise, five to ten years, I would have no problem, you know, saying that that's, that's going to get you, you know, what you need.
And in fact, too, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bob.
I, I wanted to ask, I have three, three things that come to mind, middle school east, Woodland Elementary School and a Cisco telephone server. We have Woodland Project, and I'm not sure if you're aware of that, we're opening a new elementary school in two thousand and sixteen. And we want to make sure, and Paul and I have discussed this as well, to make sure that whatever system's going to be in place, we're dealing with a proprietary system, however it is, that, that's, that that technology that's decided for that building is consistent with what's going to happen district-wide and make sure that we're not, and, and that will be funded separately through the current project. So that can be, I think, off the, off the list of needs, I would suppose, for, for, for budgeting. Also, middle school east, as a result of the new Woodland School, grade configuration will effectively take that middle school offline. So now we're consolidating even further. And then the third part is our telephone system, which we just, we understand that it's dated, but we just did a significant upgrade this summer. I'm not sure how much we spent on that, but it was significant.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand dollars. So we want to make sure that doesn't tank all of a sudden as a result of. So I, I don't know if you could comment on, on those three pieces?
Yeah, so this kind of infrastructure, absolutely, from a Cisco call manager, voice-over-I P perspective, totally fully supported. It's the same infrastructure that we run our business on. And if I were to take somebody on a tour of the Milford Wally Computer Office and open up the back closet and I would show you H P switches running the Wally Cisco phone system. So this is the same stuff that we run our business on. And so there's really a non-issue from a H P Cisco perspective. If you were to do a, a survey across I T directors throughout Massachusetts, the H P infrastructure, the Arrow Hive, I would not be shocked if you wouldn't find seventy or eighty percent of school systems with this kind of infrastructure, with this actual manufacturer and products that.
It's very simplistic for me because I don't, I understand about any percentage of that. Will our phones be compromised with a new?
Not at all.
And did you take those switches, Dean, that the hundred thousand we're just referring to? Is that out of the scope of your analysis? Or are you recommending replacing those that were done six months ago?
As of right now, we've put a number in place that shows replacing it. Because a phone is a very low draw power device, so the phone really doesn't need a lot of power to run it. So the switches that you have are perfectly fine for powering phones. But when you start talking about access points and security cameras and those kind of devices, they draw a lot more power. The whole concept of what we call a converged infrastructure is having one piece of wire, say, go to a administrator or, you know, office and run the phone and the P C or the laptop or the printer. So we don't want to have five different pieces of wire go to an office so we can run a laptop and a phone and all that. So we try to converge it onto one. So what we don't want is, you know, we're trying to show you that it would be nice to, the switches that you have aren't going to support access points and aren't going to support the P O E plus going forward. Doesn't mean we can't make it work, so, but we started with what if it could all be replaced, knowing that that might not be realistic. And I have a, a meeting set up with our phone vendor as well to coordinate with Wally to go through all of those issues and make sure that we come up with the best possible solution to keep that going, so.
So how long would it take for you to identify what the delta is between what ideally in a perfect world we should have and what we can afford to keep online in our system because it's adequate? And what we need to add because what we have is not adequate?
Yeah, I, I think if we're looking at today's Thursday, we're probably looking at something around the end-of-day Monday timeframe where we could have a really concise document around, you know, a realistic approach versus there's no budget and, you know, we're just going to replace it all. You know, I think that's realistic for us.
The, the question about the Woodland discussions, I mean, Paul, you should be in touch with our,
The architect over there?
The architect, to make sure that, that we're not building entirely a different kind of architecture.
Totally.
My tech?
Yeah.
While we're still on that?
Yeah.
I got the contact info. Rick, I noticed that you snuck into the room. In fact, where is the working group right now with our technology? Have we even started the bidding and the hardware and the infrastructure on that? Have we been discussing that in the, in the working group or do you know?
We have been discussing those factors.
Do, do we have any documentation on the types of hardware and infrastructure we've been talking about yet or?
Joe?
When this all does go through, how long do you think it would take to get it all completely done? I mean, would you do it one school at a time or try to get them all done during summer vacation?
The ideal scenario for a project like this is that it would be just all done over summer vacation. We definitely run multiple crews and, you know, from a wiring perspective, you know, some of the wiring that we're doing with some schools is starting as soon as, you know, the end of April when they, they comfortable with their award. So, but no, a, a project like this is, you know, two or three days of our time in a building, getting a cut over once the wiring's complete. The wiring is usually the biggest factor. But the kind of numbers that we're looking at, you know, this could easily be accomplished from, you close down the school at the end of June to you're opening up in August, September with a whole new infrastructure. It's absolutely doable over the summer. And, you know, if it's cut back and scaled, then obviously, you know, you could, you know, we have a lot of schools that. And, you know, if it's cut back and scaled, then obviously, you know, you could, you know, we have a lot of schools that obviously have to work over the summer too. So, you can't just shut them all down at the end of June and say you have no network for the rest of the summer.
Just a follow-up to the superintendent's question. In terms of East and Woodland, are we looking at actually doing something with the wireless and the access right now in, as part of this plan? Or will that be delayed? Would we not do anything with East right now and not do anything with Woodland other than planning for the, the new Woodland?
That was my sense.
That may not be your, that may not be yours to answer.
Right, yes.
I know, it probably isn't.
It's, it's, it's a great question. I, I, my, my sense of this whole thing was to get the, the schools that are going to remain for many more years to come taken care of first, but yet not let the other schools that we're still using currently, you know, fall apart with the network. It's still an important part of our way of, how we communicate. So, we think that we could still, maybe we have to continue to patch in those locations. But that's just my take on it. I don't know if you have a different thought, Paul.
No, I mean, it, it's just a matter of presenting, you, you know, the best-case scenario for all the schools, you know, and then decide amongst ourselves, I guess, what we actually want to pick and choose, you know, as to, to do per school. So, that's why we have different proposals for each school.
And that would be to my question to Dean is, as, as well is, so, that would be a fear. I mean, we've, and Dean, again, just to kind of bring it to speed, we have potentially two buildings that have about eighteen months left.
Okay.
And one of them will be, one of them is still up for debate as far as what's, you know, up for decision as far as what will become of it. The other one, there is no debate. It will be a soccer field. So, there was not a lot of technology needed there generally. If we were to move forward with this type of a plan and we did not move forward with those two buildings, which I foundationally have a problem with spending money on a ten-year plan for buildings that won't exist in eighteen months, would we still be able to, I mean, I, I don't want to put them in the Stone Age and have them not be able to communicate. That's a huge problem. Would we be able to at least put some bandages and baling wire in the, in the place to be able to have those buildings talk to each other and not put us at an educational, significant disadvantage for those children?
At, at a thirty-thousand-foot view, my answer would be yes. My plan to back that up would be to get resources into those buildings tomorrow and get an exact answer to that. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
You, you, I mean, yes, the ultimate answer is probably yes, but you would have to spend some sort of money to, okay.
Certainly understand.
Equipment can always be moved to another building, so.
And, and we certainly understand that. It's the same thing as, you know, it's, it's not like we're not ordering paper towels because we know we're getting rid of the building. We've got to invest some level of money in it, but it's, it, it's a, it is a critical beast, so.
Yeah, and obviously, you, you, you know, as you flow down, you know, obviously, it's usually the high schools and the junior high schools where you expect the one-to-one and, you know, that kind of BYOD program. You know, I don't know what your aggressive plans are for that middle school and K through whatever to be all having a laptop or a Chromebook or, or whatever. So, yeah, that's usually how it, how it works.
Lonnie.
Sorry, Lonnie, can you open a little bit? I just want to speak on the.
On your mic.
On the, the Middle School East situation, sorry. We did just upgrade the switches in there to, you know, Cisco small business line, all gigabit switches in there now. The wiring is, you know, as old as probably the wiring here. So, again, where that school is kind of in the, in the area of not sure what you're going to do with it at the end, that was planned just to band-aid it. We've band-aided it pretty well up to this point. They're running pretty efficiently. There was some issues with internet connection. I think it's been, you know, we, we've rectified those situations now. As far as Woodland, all we put in over there was a loner server that was one of our loners because the server had died, which is just kind of working in there. We kind of left it in there until you guys are ready to move into the new building because, again, that building's kind of really coming offline. So, the switching at, at Woodland is the same type of switching, I believe, that's in this building, you know, thirty-five sixties.
Yeah.
Those type of units, which will be sufficient to get you through. But, again, with, with not wanting to spend any money over there, obviously, because that building was coming offline, we've just been patching where it needs to be, along with the other, the rest of the IT team from the school.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lonnie.
So, so then building a, a, a modified proposal that is more realistic as opposed to sort of the dream one.
Yeah, we have the inventory of those Cisco small business server, or products and absolutely.
Yeah, and then taking those out of the equation, may, maybe that makes it with the, with the potential of this being reimbursable at, at, what, sixty percent?
Mm-hmm.
That, that, that may be something worth.
Who, who would be the best person, if we don't already have it, to get us the student population? So, we know by building what technically you're eligible for.
The total number of population.
The student population by building.
Um, yeah, we, my office, we can provide that.
Do we have that already?
I think Steve already has.
Okay, I thought so, but.
Yeah, we have that in my office too, and you need to contact me. Sure.
Yeah, we usually go to the POE website.
Joe?
Just want to go back to the, the grant discussion for, for a minute. This is obviously a very important first step that's going to lay that, that foundation for us. But we, we, we completely realize that at some point we have to build the house and furnish the house, right? So, going back to that Mass IT grant that you mentioned, only thirty schools applied for that grant. Paul, what are some steps that you're taking to keep your pulse on the grant money that's available to us as we move forward?
Um, I have investigated a few, a few grants as well, but I, I haven't been on the, the Mass IT one yet as well. So, I mean, I can certainly jump on that as early, you know, tomorrow morning, but.
Is it the one we applied for back? Yeah, we applied, we applied for one while back and they gave us a, a discussion as to why we weren't eligible and because we didn't have, what, one-to-ones already rolled out. Just, just did have that somehow.
Yeah, the Mass IT one I know was focused really only around middle schools. And it snuck up on a lot of people, so, you know, like I said.
Yeah, we submitted it.
It was a small, small number.
But we were, we weren't.
That was the one that we were frustrated at the results.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we did.
We had a, a follow-up of them. Wasn't for lack of trying.
Yeah, and, and like I said, they, you know, love Mass IT. Hopefully, nobody here is directly connected to them, but they, they could have done things a lot better.
They could have spread the wealth to other communities much better.
And I have other communities that asked for a hundred thousand and got a hundred and eighty. They, they were given almost twice as much as what they asked for. And they don't know why. And now they're like fifty thousand and they don't even need it. So, it's like going back into the pot.
Do you want to send them our deposit slips?
Yeah.
Now we're talking banking, now we're understanding.
And he had to tell us he was a banker.
You know, Paul, I, I, first I want to thank everybody for the presentation. You did a really nice job. Not that we didn't know we had issues, but it's a little more disheartening than we thought. Uh, you know, we've brought you back here three or four times, had you put on some presentations, but I still don't, I don't get a warm, like, I really need you to, what do you need from us? You know?
I don't know what else there is to, to say in that regard in terms of like, I'm, I'm bringing the proposal to you, you know, as far as like what, what this district needs. I mean, school by school. We've investigated what's not there, obviously, but now it's just time to present what we actually need to get running and to lay that foundation. So, I mean, there's, there's not much else to say other than the fact of here's the equipment that we need. We're bringing in the fiber over the summer. I mean, we, we have the internet. We're going to get the wireless. I mean, this, this is what's bringing us up to, you know, schools around the other parts of the, parts of the state too, so.
So, I'm sorry, not to interrupt you. You, you, you're leave, tonight leaving us in for financial information of what school, you know, we say we were going to do the Brookside School with Wally Computers recommendation. This is what we're looking to spend.
Correct. I have the quotes. I think the quotes, they, they were probably sent to you guys in the school committee. Yeah, they're, they're done school by school, exactly what's needed to bring us where we got, where we got to go.
Okay.
But now we need that revised.
Correct, exactly, yeah.
Right.
Yep.
So, what's your?
I'm sorry.
So, to Mike's point, is your recommendation, we do everything? Is it a phased-in approach? I know one of the things that we've, we've guided you towards is to working with Rob Quinn, who is the master of phased-in approach. What is, and to Mike's point, what are you recommending to us? Is it do everything, do something to the high school, to the middle school, to, that's, that's what I think what we're, at least what I'm looking for.
Okay, that, that's, that's totally what we had a conversation the other day, you know, in a smaller group with Bob as well, that, you know, it, it, it's been this way for years and now it's at a point where I don't see doing it piecemeal. I don't see it doing little bits and pieces here because by the time you end up with the last bit and piece that you're doing, the first one's now needing some issues and help. So, my projection and, and recommendation, soup to nuts. You know, I, you, you do the high school, okay, great. We can start off with that, but we're still going to be spinning and spinning our wheels on the other schools that, that need help and that sort of thing and, you know. So, it, it's just, it, it, it makes more sense to have it, everything functioning, everything compatible, everything up and running, same speeds, same feeds, you know, and that sort of thing, so. I mean, that's my proposal. It's been, it's been the need for a long time. Nobody's shocked by that. And I, we do it all, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I mean, when I look at these proposals, the Quick Math puts it at over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, you're coming here, recommending this is what we need, you know, if everything goes well and we get the, the, the E rates that, you know, this committee's looking at coming up with basically two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to get this done in the fashion that it's proposed here.
Um, I think my numbers are more close to one point one. And, and again, that might have been the other two schools as well, but.
I might have missed something.
We'll have to wait till the revised quotes again for Monday, but I think it's going to be more than that.
So, that, so that's what we're looking at is one point one.
And I believe we have a document, I apologize, you know, we had a great team working on this and I got voted to come and talk. But we have a document that we use for these kind of projects, which is the E rate. So, this is a school system, so by building, this is the enrollment. So, this is the eligible E rate money for that school by enrollment. And then we do access points, wiring, switching, services, total, and then how much is left over. So, we have a spreadsheet, I believe, built for you for Milford like this. They would show you if you were able to go and ask for one hundred percent of your eligible E rate money, this would be your project. So, from my perspective, that's probably a summary document that we can get back to you, Paul, tomorrow.
Okay.
Because I'm pretty sure it already exists. And then, you know, I think from a, you know, from coming back, you know, it's a matter of, okay, if we go after one hundred percent of our eligible E rate, can the school committee fund the matching funds of that? That's question one. And if you say, no, we can't afford the two hundred, we can only afford X, then that obviously produces what the end number is. And then we reverse engineer it based on, okay, we're going to reuse this Cisco switch here and this there and/or let's take that school off the table. So, it becomes a exercise of this is the ultimate of replace it all, can't afford that. This is the by-school budget, and then you produce the different categories. And sometimes you focus on, okay, we don't need any switches in that school. We're just going to focus on wireless. Other schools you focus on, well, you know, we know that school's not going to be in a one-to-one in the next two years, so maybe we do every other classroom in that school, not every classroom in that school. The great part about the technology is you can do every other classroom as long as you know you're not going to have five or six classrooms next to each other all carrying a one-to-one in the next six months. So, to me, this would be the kind of document that would be a good working to kind of give the high executive level of what the budget looks like and the different categories where it pulls from. And then we can reverse engineer that along with the equipment that we can reuse. So, that's, that's the, the format that we've used for a lot of these.
I know. I, I like a bunch of spreadsheets. I'd like to see a bunch of them.
Yep. Yeah, I'm ninety-nine percent sure we already did it. I just didn't bring it, or it's in my email and I couldn't find it quick enough. But I'm pretty sure our guy did that for you. So, if we have the enrollment, then we obviously know what the five-year E rate budget is. And then it's just a decision of, yeah, we can afford to go after all of it for these schools or no, we got to do that school over a two-year plan. Everybody says, again, knock on wood, this year and next year is going to be one hundred percent funded for E rate requests. And the great part about that is everybody who does get it this year and goes after their five-year plan, they can't apply next year. So, that leaves more money for everybody next year because the people who could afford to take a hundred percent can't ask for any for the next four years. So, you know, with that being said, you know, a lot of our manufacturers have had a lot of people locked in rooms crunching numbers. And the word on the street is there's more money than what people are asking for. So, we'll see.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for coming. It was very informative.
Great, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Lonnie. Thanks, guys. Next it. Okay, next agenda item is reported the superintendent of schools.
Uh, just one item this evening. I was asked at the last meeting to draft a letter on behalf of the school committee for the Masters, Masters Association of School Committees. And so, I included that in your packet. I also took the liberty of forwarding this to Representative Fernandez to take a look at, to make sure he was comfortable with what was being proposed and thought the letter looked fine. So, if there's any edits, I'll make those. Otherwise, we'll have this drafted to be signed by the chairman of the school committee. And I'll have similar correspondence that I'll send to, to the Masters Association of School Superintendents.
That's great, thank you.
Welcome. And if there's any edits, I have, I have the word version right in front of me. I'm happy to make them right now.
I think it's good.
Thank you.
I'm sorry? Uh, yeah, uh, I don't know if you need to vote on this. Probably not, just a matter of business.
No, of course.
Make sure it's okay.
Looks good.
No, I don't think so.
Very good. We'll get this off, prepared for signature. Mike will be to sign on behalf of the committee or?
Sure.
Is it okay or would you prefer every member of the committee sign? Either, either is fine.
You all, that's fine, either one.
Just have you, make it easier logistically to have one person sign.
Yeah, right. I, I motioned that Mike signs the letter on behalf of the entire, of the school committee.
Second. All in favor?
Okay. Very good. That's all I have, Ziva.
Next agenda, reported the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources.
Yes, I have for the committee's approval for warrants for their approval. The first warrant is in the amount of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred, ninety-five dollars and one cent.
Motion from Scott, second from Pat. All in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of three hundred sixty-one thousand, six hundred eighty-two dollars and ninety-five cents.
Motion from Jen, second by Joe. All in favor?
The third warrant is in the amount of two thousand six, I'm sorry, twenty thousand, six hundred, twenty-one dollars and seventy-one cents.
And motion from Joe, second by John. All in favor?
And the fourth warrant is in the amount of eighty-two thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-three cents.
Motion from Scott, second from Pat. All in favor?
And the last request for school committee's approval is the cost reimbursement in the amount of six thousand, two hundred seventy-one dollars even.
Motion from Joe, second from John. All in favor? And we have gifts.
And we do have gifts.
Okay, first one is from family and community network helpers in the amount of nine hundred and fifty dollars. The purpose of it is for summer playgrounds. Do you want to do these all together or make one motion? Next one again is the attached membership drive. These are all individual.
Right. Oh, she snuck, she's, she's getting sneaky. She's starting to get names for you to read off.
Okay, first one is Lacey and Malcolm Beaton for a hundred dollars. Alyssa and Wiseman Sater for twenty-five. Diane Ciccarelli for twenty-five. Emileka Marcos, Marcos for twenty-five. Rachel Gary and Joanne Wood for twenty-five. Jason and Christine Shadler for twenty-five. Jorn and Joyce Fishback for thirty. And Melanie and Jacob Chapel for fifty. And the amount of the gift is three hundred and five dollars. Next one is Whole Kids Foundation for the Greenhouse Initiative. It's a two thousand dollar gift. Very generous.
Very generous.
Very.
It's one of the grants we've written for Whole Foods.
Oh, really? Motion to accept the gifts from Joe, second from Jen. All in favor?
Very generous.
Very generous.
Very generous. Very, very. Mr. Superintendent, you get the letters?
Of course.
Absolutely. Thank you. And next agenda item is subcommittee updates. Athletics?
Uh, no.
Okay. Policy?
No updates yet.
Wellness, Bob, I'm going to be honest, we put it to you a little bit. Lonnie's in it.
Yeah, no, we have, we have nothing to report.
Okay. Okay. Safety and security, we have not met. Middle School East reuse?
Uh, we did have a meeting. We were able to go through, we did receive a proposal. When the committee first came into being, just for the benefit of the committee as well as the, the viewing public here, Selectman Murray had suggested that there was a, a company named, an organization from, through mass development that may be able to do the work at no cost for doing the building analysis. What we've actually come to find out and. Um, what we've actually come to find out and, um, when we went back and went through the proposal, uh, they actually did come through the proposal. The way that the proposal was actually listed was, um, they would effectively charge you a very minimal upfront fee with the understanding that you would then contract them. They would essentially lend you the difference. And then they would, and then when you use them for whatever their proposal was, they would basically charge you on the back end once the project was being done for it. Um, the cost on that, um, the initial cost on their proposal was somewhere in the neighborhood of, was in the neighborhood of about eighty thousand dollars for just doing the assessment, which was well above the forty thousand dollars that was allocated by town meeting. Um, and, and in fairness, it was, uh, it was an extremely comprehensive report, but it was probably well be, it was actually well beyond what we were actually looking for. So, uh, we're going down a different route. Uh, we're actually gonna be doing some, um, we're actually gonna be looking to reach out and doing some requests or proposals from architectural firms at the same time as some contract, uh, some, uh, commercial contractors. We're also in the process of working with some commercial realtors to just start, start to do, um, some market testing on what the valuation might be of the building and what the potential, uh, market appetite might be. So that's, that's where the next step is right now. So, uh, we don't have another meeting for another month. We'll be back together in May.
Very nice. Thank you. Woodland School?
Well, we don't meet until April eighteenth, but we do have our groundbreaking ceremony. It's this Saturday. It's at the Woodland School at ten AM. Uh, anyone who would like to attend is certainly welcome to do so. And, uh, it's gonna be great to see the equipment out there and actually kick this project off. I'm really excited about it. It's been a long, long road. I've been doing this for four years now in this building, so I'm excited to see.
Pat, some of the neighbors in the area tell me they've already started, you know, trees and things like that, and, yeah.
We're, we're trying to, we're trying to do the actual ceremony in a place where it doesn't look like the construction's already started, so.
The third soccer field?
And for Mrs. Dagnes, please don't forget Healthy Schools Week.
Oh, yeah, send me your homework, please, as you.
I saw mine right here, yeah, so. Healthy Schools Week, so. Um, next agenda item is future agenda items. Does anybody have anything they'd like to have added to future, future agendas right now? Any old business? And with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Joe, seconded by Scott, all in favor? Adjournment at eight fifty-five. Good night.